Good morning, everyone. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Chair of the Committee, also Councilwoman representing the 2nd District. In attendance today, we have Councilman Mark Conway, representing the 4th District. We have Councilman Ryan Dorsey, representing the 3rd District. Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District. And I received a message, so we know that Councilman James Torrance will be on shortly. Also in attendance, we have from the Mayor's Office Nina Themelis. And from the Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson. We also have Lucy Font as well. Representing the Committee, a staff to the Committee is Matthew Peters. And before we get started, just a couple of ground rules. We do ask that you stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or organization you are with, and your position. Please speak slowly and clearly. After you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. And we do ask that Committee members and city agency officials keep your video on for the duration of the hearing, unless you're experiencing technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. And this is for transparency, so members of the public know that we are listening and that we are paying attention. Last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. You will have two minutes each for your testimony. The Committee is hearing two bills today. Bill 21-0103 Suicide Prevention Coordinator Establishment, and Bill 21-0104 Baltimore City Work Group on Women in Public Safety. We are going to start with Bill 21-0103, for the purpose of establishing the position of Suicide Prevention Coordinator within the Health Department and providing for the duties of the Suicide Prevention Coordinator. For the hearing for both bills, we're going to start with brief opening remarks, and then we're going to hear reports from the agencies, and then give Committee members the opportunity to ask questions. After that, we're going to move on to public testimony. Suicidal ideation and deaths by suicide are on the rise within the United States, and Baltimore has never been immune to this matter. We have seen suicide surges throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, especially with an increase in deaths by suicide within our communities. We must ensure that our most vulnerable residents and their families have the knowledge and resources to combat this mental health issue head-on. Suicides are preventable, and we must take direct action, again, to support all of our communities and curb this surge. We're going to now move on to Agency Representatives, Committee members. I just asked that you hold your questions until we hear from all of the agencies. For the Health Department, you would be up first.
Great, thank you. Good morning. So I'm Kelly Eastman, I'm representing the Baltimore City Health Department today. And so we do stand by our agency report, and our position is favorable with amendments for this bill. And I'm happy, we are happy to answer any questions and talk through those amendments at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. My name is Pedro Ponte, Assistant Board Director for the Baltimore City Department of Finance. Our position to this proposed bill is opposed, and the main reason is that existing resources are not available to fund this position fiscal 2022. We definitely understand the need and the value of having this new position, but there are no existing resources for funding it. We will appreciate that the Health Department find within their budget resources to fund it if that position is to be created this year. If it's not this year, we welcome the opportunity to work with the Department and make those resources available for fiscal 2023. And I'm happy to answer any question you may have.
Okay, and last, we have the City Solicitor.
Hi, Councilwoman, this is Hillary Rulie for the City's Law Department. We approve the bill for forming legal sufficiency, as well as the amendments proposed by the Health Department, and you also, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to just go through a review of the amendments. First, we're going to start actually with the Health Department, and then I'm going to provide my amendment as well. Matthew Peters is going to bring the, Matthew Peters' staff to the Committee is going to bring the amendments up, so we can all see the amendments at this time. And thanks for your patience. And just give us one second, please. I also want to state that Councilman James Torrance has joined us. And also recognize that our Vice President Sharon Gray Middleton, she's not a member of the Committee, but she's also in attendance. All of the amendments have been emailed to the Committee members earlier this morning. We're still going to go through them for the Health Department. Can you explain your amendments at this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to do that. The First Amendment, listed Amendment Number One, is actually a technical correction. It does not change the text of the bill. It corrects items that were not capitalized to a capitalization, but the actual text is unchanged. The Second Amendment changes the word "shall" to the Suicide Prevention Coordinator is authorized to. The rationale for this change is that the duties that are listed are incredibly well thought through and comprehensive in terms of suicide prevention. But given that this is an unfunded position, we do have concerns that any one person would be able to adequately and efficiently perform all of this work. So we would like to have the flexibility, particularly if we contract the work out, to enumerate the duties that we believe the funding we may be able to obtain would be able to handle. I'm having trouble moving the page down. I don't know if I can. Can the page be moved down to the next amendment on the screen? Oh, thank you. The Third Amendment is a technical correction. The original bill stated that it would be the local behavioral health authority that could assign additional duties, and we are changing that to the Health Commissioner would assign additional duties as deemed appropriate. And finally, there's a section that's actually added as Amendment Four, and this recognizes the fact that the Health Department is not actually the local behavioral health authority for Baltimore City. So we would really be contracting this work out to the local behavioral health authority, where the infrastructure is already existing to support the position, should we be able to fund it. Finally, Amendment Five, that's on Page Three. We are looking to push the date out, so that this would allow us to begin in fiscal year 23. We do not, as was mentioned by budget, we do not have a current budget for this position. So we would have to seek funds in FY23 for new funding for this position for the Health Department in general funds. And I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, we're going to pull up my amendment, and then I'm going to briefly explain my amendment, and then we're going to move directly to questions for the Committee members. And Matthew Peters is going to add it at this time. So my amendment is simply in addition that we're going to make sure that the Coordinator is just consulting with the Health Department's maternal mortality review team once a position is established to, just to collaborate, just to review data. It's a very simple amendment that I just wanted to make sure was added. And for the members of the House Committee, I'm sure that many of you do know, but I want to explain to the public, but this is a review team that started meeting within June. So I do want to make sure that we are aware that we have this review team within Baltimore City under the Health Department. Thank you. At this time, are there any questions from our Committee members? You can raise your hands, or you can signal at this time, and I'll be able to see you shortly, just after we remove this from the screen. Thank you. Do we have any questions from Committee members regarding this bill? Okay, great, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Chair McCray. I did have a question related to the proposed budget for this particular position. Has there been any talk about budget related to this particular position? Any type of budget narrative, or any type of scope of budget for this particular position within the Health Department?
No, thank you for your question. No, not at this stage, but we would be requesting an increase in our level of spending in general funds for FY23 to accommodate the position.
And Madam Chair, I have one more question related to that question. Would it be, would it be general funds, or would it be grant funds?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, was that directed to me or to the Chair?
That, I'm sorry, that was directed towards you, ma'am.
Yes, this would be a request for general funds.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions at this time? Bear with me, you all, I'm having technical issues, just give me a few seconds. So seeing that there are no additional questions, the Committee staff, we're now going to call on members of the public who wish to testify on Bill 21-0103. Members of the public, you will have two minutes each to provide your testimony. We have received written testimony as well that will be added to the bill file. Just want to let you know, for those who are signed in using a computer, we do request that you use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify, and we will start with you. Next, we will go through all of the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in cannot be identified by name. You will be unmuted by the Committee staff one by one. You're going to hear two beeps when you are unmuted, and if you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, they simply need to say so after the two beeps. And if any speaker is inaudible, you will be directed to call back. Our Committee staff member, Matthew Peters, is going to take over for the public testimony at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several members of the public who have signed up in advance to testify. Anyone else is welcome to use the raise hand function if they would like to testify as well. We are going to start with Dr. Cynthia Lewis.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dr. Cynthia Major Lewis. I am co-chair of the Baltimore City Suicide Prevention Legislative Work Group, along with Councilwoman McCray. I am also the Director of Adult Psychiatric Emergency Services at Johns Hopkins Hospital. My comments today are my own, given my area of expertise and independent of my Johns Hopkins affiliation. Today is September 15, 2021, and I am here to provide testimony in support of Council Bill 21-0103 for the establishment of a Baltimore City Suicide Prevention Coordinator via the Health, Environment and Technology Committee. The Baltimore City Council Suicide Prevention Legislative Work Group is composed of providers, survivors, advocates, faith leaders, elected officials, nonprofit organizations, educators, community leaders, and researchers dedicated to decreasing barriers Baltimore City residents face to access efficient and effective mental health services to support their mental health and prevent suicides from occurring within our city. The goals of this work group include to encourage and support suicide prevention coordination efforts amongst various sectors in Baltimore City that specifically target vulnerable and underserved populations, to submit sound, innovative, evidence-based policy recommendations and procedural recommendations for implementation, and to enhance continuity of care among existing services in our city. To this end, the Suicide Prevention Legislative Work Group urges a favorable report on Council Bill 21-0103 Suicide Prevention Coordinator Establishment. Since the start of the public health crisis, Maryland has experienced what experts refer to as a dual pandemic of suicide and COVID-19. From February 2020 to March 2020, there has been a 45% increase in calls to the Maryland helpline. In March 2020, there was an 842% increase in text to the Maryland helpline. An increased risk of death by suicide include frontline workers, people experiencing homelessness, migrants, victims of abuse and violence, the elderly, and stigmatized groups, including adolescents and sexual and racial minorities. Pandemic-related factors that increase risk of death by suicide include increased isolation, stigma, discrimination, increased work pressure, chronic stress, and difficulties accessing healthcare, just to name a few. Studies are showing significant racial differences in statewide suicide mortality trends during the pandemic. Among Black Maryland residents, the suicide mortality rate appeared to double between March 2020 and May 2020 compared to the rates in 2017 and 2019. In contrast, suicide mortality appeared almost halved among white residents during the same time. In a city in which approximately 60% of residents identify as Black, these disparities are cause for alarm and a call to action. Disturbingly, data from 2018 indicates a trend towards suicidal thoughts and behaviors among middle and high school students in Maryland's public schools. This is especially true for youth that identify as LGBTQ. Lesbian, gay, and bisexual youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than straight youth. Further, a 2015 survey of transgender adults found that 40% of respondents had attempted suicide in their lifetime. We know that time away from peers, the illness and death of loved ones, and other traumas caused by COVID-19 have a long-lasting negative impact on Baltimore's young people. The establishment of a Suicide Prevention Coordinator position gives the city the unique opportunity to unite service providers, agencies, state resources, residents with lived experience, and other entities to ensure intervention, prevention, and continuity of care. It will be especially important that the Coordinator collaborate with entities serving our city's most vulnerable residents, specifically Baltimore City Police, local healthcare providers, and crisis response teams. This collaborative approach will ensure that residents receive the services they need in a timely and continuous manner. Additionally, the Coordinator will be able to provide needed mental health trainings and public awareness prevention strategies. Studies show that suicide prevention training positively impacts the knowledge and skills of trainees. An emphasis on training gatekeepers with the most contact with vulnerable populations will be critical in suicide prevention efforts. Finally, the Coordinator will provide invaluable data that will contribute to our understanding of trends regarding suicides and suicide attempts in Baltimore City. It will be crucial to continue collecting and examining data in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting economic crisis. This data will inform the development of a citywide strategic suicide prevention plan. The position of Suicide Prevention Coordinator is already established in neighboring Baltimore County. The Baltimore County Coordinator collaborates with local emergency departments, and the Child Fatality Review Team increases linkages with the crisis response system. The Coordinator also develops public awareness campaigns and facilitates trainings. Each of these efforts contributes to the establishment of the Baltimore County Suicide Prevention Strategic Plan. To replicate these efforts in Baltimore City would greatly benefit residents and providers. In conclusion, COVID-19 will have a long-term negative impact on mental health and suicide risk, especially for Baltimore's most vulnerable residents. The Suicide Prevention Coordinator will be invaluable in connecting mental health organizations and agencies that previously worked in silos, providing life-saving trainings, and contributing to the establishment of a strategic suicide prevention plan. The Baltimore City Suicide Prevention Legislative Work Group thus urges a favorable report on Council Bill 21-0103. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Major Lewis. And we're going to move on to the next, the next person who's going to be testifying at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, we have Dr. Paul Nistat.
Hi, my name is Paul Nistat. I'm a psychiatrist and suicide researcher at Johns Hopkins, but like Dr. Lewis, my views here are my own, not representing Hopkins. I also support this bill 21-0103. I serve on the City Council President Suicide Prevention Work Group, as well as as a consultant for the Governor of Suicide Prevention Task Force, consult on self-harm cases for the city's opioid fatality review committee, and co-chair of the Suicide Prevention Hub at Johns Hopkins. I treat suicidal patients in my outpatient clinic, and severely suicidal patients on my inpatient unit at Johns Hopkins. I also run trainings for clinicians, police, and impacted families to help them understand the role of Maryland's extreme-risk protection order laws in preventing firearm suicides. I list all these roles to illustrate just a small fraction of the many different and diverse organizations, considerations, agencies, and systems, each individually attempting to prevent suicide in our city. We try to harmonize, but frankly, suicide is a multidisciplinary public health problem, with roots in everything from psychiatric illness to social justice to firearm regulation, trauma, education, incarceration, hospitalization, stigmatization, and alienation. We've already heard the scope of the suicide problem from Dr. Lewis, as it's the second-leading cause of death among Americans under 40, with rates that have been steadily increasing for 20 years. What's changing is the number and diversity of groups created to address these deaths. Quarterback these many diverse efforts and perspectives involved in suicide prevention, Baltimore County has brought on a suicide prevention coordinator. Baltimore City has not up until now. Why now? Because the need is increasing, especially in the context of COVID. Most experts predicted that the pandemic would increase suicide rates dramatically. I had the fortune of working with our local medical examiner, so I've been able to chart and publish suicide mortality data in an up-to-the-minute way that the CDC cannot do nationally. What I found, as some of you have heard just now from Dr. Lewis and have read in the papers, was that while suicide rates among whites were stable or lower in the pandemic, it was Black Marylanders who seemed to suffer the most, with rates almost doubling during the initial lockdown. Now, our various government groups, nonprofits, and academics and clinicians are frantically trying to better understand the spike in Black suicide in Maryland, and in doing so, are bringing in new partners and new strategies driven by the communities most impacted. These efforts must be coordinated under one banner, if they are to avoid tripping over each other, and if they are successfully save lives. I urge you to vote in favor of the creation of a city's suicide prevention coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nistat. We're going to move on to our next, the next person who's going to be testifying.
Next, we have Tevis Simon.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Tevis Simon, and I am here to testify in support of Council Bill 21-0103. I am a mental health advocate, public speaker, peer recovery specialist, support group facilitator, and mental health mentor. I share these titles with you because the lack of the resources that I needed growing up is what drove me, what drives me to the certifications and education that I have today in mental health. My first suicide attempt, unfortunately, was at the age of 12. My second and third suicide attempts were at the age of 30. Words, wow, here to testify. There are so many words I could say, so many phrases I could use, but what I'll say is, it would have been monumental to have a central location to get the resources, not only that I needed, but that my guardians needed for me at the age of 12. The support that they needed where a young Black girl attempted suicide, and my guardians didn't know what to do with that. Yes, they contacted the doctors, and the doctors referred them to therapists, but there was no support. There were really no resources. By the time I got into my 30s, I went through life coping through life, not really healing, not having ongoing treatment, not being provided with ongoing services. I went through life the best way I knew how. And unfortunately, life landed me at the psychiatric ward, not once, but twice, due to suicide attempts. In my 30s, when I was in my 30s, I can say it would have made a monumental difference had there been a central location, a suicide prevention coordinator, someone that had the resources, that could disperse these resources, not just to, not just from other agencies, to guardians, to community members, but also having direct communication and rapport with our law enforcement, with our police officers that come out to the calls for suicide attempts, mental health calls and crises, and maybe having that information shared with the Suicide Prevention Coordinator, so that Suicide Prevention Coordinator can reach out by way of resources. It would have made a ton of difference in my life. So now here I am, at the age of 43, learning what I've learned through mental health, through various classes I've taken by furthering my education, and through my own consistency in my treatment, I now understand the resources that are out here. But the work that I had to do in order to get to those resources were depressing. They were filled with anxiety, and I often felt unheard and unseen, just simply seeking out the resources. So again, my testimony is in favor of Baltimore City having its own Suicide Prevention Coordinator, because what I know is that there are 12, 13-year-old young girls and young boys in Baltimore City that are battling with their mental health, and their parents or guardians are unsure on how to get them, the children and the family, the resources that they need. I know that there are 30-something-year-old women and men that are battling with their mental health, but they're not quite sure where to go first. I believe Baltimore City having a Suicide Prevention Coordinator will bring the ends together, so that it has a true definition of what it looks like for healing for our city and for the constituents of this city. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Simon, for your powerful testimony. I do want to just note that Councilman John Bullock actually joined us, but I wanted to make sure that I just acknowledged him. We're going to move on to our next, the next person who's going to be testifying. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Holly Wilcox.
Good morning, Councilwoman McCray and members of the Health, Environment and Technology Committee. My name is Holly Wilcox. I live and work in Baltimore City and serve as Chair of the Maryland Commission on Suicide Prevention. I support Bill 21-0103 Suicide Prevention Coordinator Establishment. For the past several years, the Suicide Prevention Commission has been concerned about data trends showing the rising rates of suicidal behaviors in Baltimore City youth. Back in 2015, CDC Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System data showed that almost 1 in 5 Baltimore City high school students seriously thought of killing themselves or attempted suicide in the past 12 months. These rates are much higher than national data and higher than Boston, Philadelphia, and Washington DC, and they've persisted. They have also been, there have also been several suicide deaths, as Tevis and others have mentioned, among middle-school-age youth, which, and attempts among middle-aged youth, which have left school personnel, healthcare providers, and other health systems serving youth feeling under-resourced, ill-prepared to address suicide in individuals this young. In response, the Youth Health and Wellness Team at Baltimore City Health Department worked with key stakeholders to address youth suicide in Baltimore by conducting a comprehensive search of the current research, reviewing cases of fatal and near-fatal deaths by suicide, and conducting key and conducting key stakeholder interviews, including clinicians, youth, and other key community members, and then created a comprehensive report for future programming efforts with recommendations for action for the prevention of suicide and promotion of mental well-being in Baltimore youth. This project concluded with a report and a child fatality summit in 2018. The report highlighted strengths and key assets, as well as opportunities for improvement in terms of communication between agencies, lack of public awareness of resources, and the need for messaging to combat stigma and stereotypes. These are key roles the Baltimore City Suicide Prevention Coordinator can play. With other major behavioral health initiatives starting or underway, such as GBRICS, the Greater Baltimore Regional Integrated Crisis System Partnership, and Maryland State Department of Education's regional clinical teams, the need for coordination across services and initiatives has never been greater in order to assure that these efforts are fully leveraged and maximized for Baltimore City residents. Having a role dedicated to coordinating suicide prevention efforts in Baltimore City would allow us to focus on using data for action in suicide prevention and resource awareness promotion across service sectors. I urge you to vote in favor of Bill 210103. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox.
Next, we have Adrienne Breidenstein.
This is Dan Rabbit from Behavioral Health System Baltimore. Adrienne is my boss. I'm not sure how, if she was planning on testifying or if she's available, but I'm here to represent the Behavioral Health System, Behavioral Health System Baltimore for the hearing. I don't want to skip the line, but just wanted to mention that.
It's okay, Dan. You're next. So what we'll do is we'll go with you on the testimony list, and then we'll circle back if Adrienne is available.
Okay, sounds great. And good morning to you, Councilwoman, Chairwoman McCray, and other council members. My name is Dan Rabbit. I'm a new policy director at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. It's exciting to be in front of you, and I look forward to working with you. I'm focused on Behavioral Health Crisis Services and the Greater Baltimore Regional Integrated Crisis System Partnership. That's a previous witness mentioned, often known as GBRICS, and I'm happy to testify today, favorable with amendments in regards to this piece, this ordinance. You know, I won't rehash the statistics and things that other speakers have shared. I will say that suicide prevention is a high priority at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. Behavioral Health System Baltimore, for those who don't know, is the local behavioral health authority for Baltimore City. We are an independent nonprofit, not a city agency, but working closely with city agencies to administer and monitor and support mental health and substance use services around the city. Suicide prevention is a part of kind of everything that the public behavioral system does, from prevention, early intervention, to treatment and ongoing care, psychiatry, and substance use treatment. In terms of specific targeted services we provide today, we have some suicide prevention services that are focused on youth. This is a relatively new program, and is a result of a reallocation that we made with Behavioral Health, with the Behavioral Authority at the state level. We've worked in some schools and have done some social media outreach to provide public education, but currently, there is no dedicated funding for adult suicide prevention education, and the youth suicide prevention education is new. We, our other frontline response to suicide and efforts to prevent suicides are here to help hotline, which is the city's Behavioral Health Crisis Line. That hotline is operated by Baltimore Crisis Response Incorporated, B.C.R.I., and they received about 3,000, or excuse me, 33,000 calls last year. They weren't all related to suicide, but a good portion of them were, and 1,200 of those calls were for youth and children seeking stabilization services through e-cars, Baltimore Children and Adolescent Response. That hotline is an effective way to try to prevent suicide, and crisis services are really important as well. GBRICS that I'm working on should augment and support and strengthen our ability to support people who are having suicidal ideation. That's what we have today. We would welcome additional resources to help coordinate our suicide prevention efforts, and so are supportive of this bill. We think it's really important, the amendments that the Health Department has put forward that provide flexibility in terms of prioritizing which of the list of duties that are included in the ordinance, the prevention coordinator, suicide prevention coordinator would focus on. We think that's important, to provide flexibility to the position and make implementation more feasible. We think that change to FY23 so that a budget request can be included and so that the position can be funded is important, and we welcome the opportunity to contract with the Health Department so that the position can sit at BHSP and be integrated into the other services that we provide. So we're really happy that this ordinance is moving forward. We appreciated the opportunity to work with Chairwoman McCray and others to make this happen, and am available for any questions if folks want to know more about BHSP and our efforts around this important topic.
Thank you so much, Dan. You utilized your time, and Adrienne's. I did want to circle back.
Sorry about that.
See if she had anything to add, or if she's available at this time.
Oh, nothing to add. Sorry, I had mute issues earlier. Thank you, Councilwoman.
It's totally okay. Matthew, we're going to see if we have anyone else who would like to testify, provide public testimony at this time that's on the line.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It does not look like we have anybody else who would like to testify.
Okay, before we move on to voting on the amendments, as well as voting on the bill, I did want to just extend an opportunity. One group that we did not, obviously allowed on the agency here, the agency portion, was the Behavioral Health System. Agency, did we have any questions for the agency? Well, not for the agency. Did we have any questions for the organization? In seeing none, I'm going to go ahead, and we'll be moving on to the amendments at this time. And at this time, is there a motion for my amendment that I submitted? Is there a motion to move that amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Second.
Okay, so moved by, the motion was made by Councilwoman Porter. It was seconded by Councilman Torrance. All those in favor, say yea, or say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? And the motion has passed. We have five amendments from the Health Department. Is there a motion to move the Health Department's amendments?
So moved.
They were moved by Councilwoman Porter, and is there a second? Okay, that second is going to go to Councilman Torrance. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay? And the motion has passed. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorably as amended?
So moved. Conway.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Conway? And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I saw Councilwoman Porter first, so we're just going to use her name. So Councilwoman Porter for the second. At this time, we're going to go ahead and vote on it. So for me, McCray, it's a yes. For Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock is a yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Yes.
And Councilman Schleifer is absent. So the motion has passed, six to zero. Councilman Schleifer is absent. The committee will report the bill at the next city council meeting. And I just want to thank all of the members of the Suicide Prevention Work Group for their time. This is a bill that came directly from the work group. It's a bill that was needed, and I just thank all of the committee members for their support, as well as the work group members for meeting over these last, I want to say about nine to 10 months of hard work on how we can move the city forward. We're going to take a brief recess, about two to three minutes, before we go into Bill 21-0104. Thank you.